I will officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, March 26, 2024 here in Coachella. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's got a hiding over there. Roll call, please.
Yes, good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Everyone's here. Nice to see everyone. Yeah. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Not aware of any either. Is there anybody from the public wishing to make comment at this time? Anybody hiding underneath the second row or anything? No. Seeing none, we'll move on. Consent calendar, we have items 5A through F.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second consent calendar.
All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Past 5:00. 7A, and I just was going to note, we have two 7As today? So I think the second 7A is probably 7D, right? Should we just figure that's what that is?
Yeah, I don't know why the system decides not to.
It's because of new section, it's sort of renumbering probably, whatever. Okay. The first 7A is authorizing solicitation of bids for the Youngs Farmland Non-Potable Water and Warp 7 improvements. Armando, good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board, audience, fellow staff. My name for the record is Armando Rodriguez with the Engineering Department. And I'm pretty happy to present this board action item. I think it's a great opportunity for us to hopefully achieve 100% recycled water within a very short time. But the purpose of this board item is to request solicitation of bids for the construction of the Young Farmland connection and also for the improvements of Warp 7 Non-Potable Water Improvements Project. The scope of work involves, one is to increase capacity from 2.5 to 5.5 NGD. This will maximize the use of recycled water, not only for the existing customer base, which we can't meet that demand, but also for future plant non-potable users, some of them who already have committed to receiving this non-potable recycled water. In addition to that, we are blending the recycled water with canal to deliver non-potable water, but we're relying on a punch station from the canal to feed Warp 7. It's beyond 30 years old and is chugging along. It definitely needs refurbishment. But then, in addition to doing the onsite improvements in regards to Warp 7, we also want to do the distribution, the non-potable water delivery. No sense of us increasing capacity that we much needed, but we also have to be able to deliver it. And so that's part of the work. I'll stop here to see if there's any questions, or I will continue with my presentation.
So on your picture, those new ponds, because there's nothing in them.
Those are all existing ponds. Those are percolation ponds. We dispose of the effluent when we don't have the capacity, even though there's demand. So this is where we perk. Predominantly, we perk on the offsite ponds, but then these ponds here is where we actually do the land disposal.
So, you know, I think we probably all have a similar question about this, Armando. It's a very expensive item. I know it does a lot of different things, but at some point, you know, we would want to get a sense of like the cost per acre foot, like how much of this water would we actually deliver? Just doesn't seem like the customers in this area use a lot of water. I mean, I don't know who the customers are. Youngs, you know, I mean, I'm looking at aerial photos of all the properties that are young properties and...
There's only 20 acres over there.
There's mostly dirt. I mean, I don't know what... What are we trying to do here? How many acre feet are we talking about?
Okay. Awesome. Good question. So we currently... Just give me a minute. So we have two primary customers. That's Del Webb, Sun City, Shadow Hills, and Country Club. They take about 3,256 acre feet.
3,156?
3,256.
256.
3,256 acre feet.
Okay, that's what they're using now?
That's what they're using now.
And that's, looks like there's an 18-hole golf course, and then there's this other golf course that looks like it's more desert, that's probably also 18 halls?
Right.
Is that right?
Right. And we have gone out to the community, and we have identified not only Youngs, Shadow Hills High School, Shadow Hills North, East Golf Course, and we estimate that we can get an additional 1,415.
That includes Youngs?
That includes Youngs.
So that makes you total of 4,671, right? So are somebody doing the math on that? So 26 million divided by 4671 is 5,500. So that's like five or six golf courses equivalent. You know, normally we do this type of project to take golf courses from groundwater to non-potable, right? And they average about 800 acre feet per golf course.
800 to 1,200, depending on the density.
Yes, or more. The high school uses 1,400. That seems like a lot.
But if you like, I can continue with my presentation, and then we can develop additional questions if...
We're sure about that? I mean, I guess they have a football field and a couple of baseball fields and...
You can't use that much.
Yeah, and we're also counting on Shadow Hills North.
Even if that has 18 acres across. I mean, a football field is one or two acres.
But we're also accounting for Shadow Hills North and East Golf Course.
Yeah, there's the golf course in there.
Well, I thought you said Sun City Shadow Hills was 3256, which also seems really high for what it looks like on satellite imaging. Does that include the HOA?
No, it does not. But even with the existing development base, we don't have enough capacity to deliver to existing?
I just want to point out, I think you meant Del Webb. Sun City Del Webb is the existing customer.
Yeah, that's what I wrote down.
You're talking about...
And then there's Sun City Shadow Hills, which will be a new customer.
Right.
Okay, so Sun City Del Webb, which is the one that has all the flood control going through it?
Has two 18s.
The one off of Washington Street?
Yeah, they both do, but yeah, Del Webb's on Washington.
Yeah.
They don't call it that anymore, but that, I know what you're talking about.
Right.
The one on Washington Street.
Yeah.
So what are they, how are they irrigating currently?
Currently, they use a blend of canal water and recycled water.
Okay.
Yeah, but we can't, you know, we can't provide them recycled water throughout the year.
So the two and a half, so we're doing two and a half million acre feet a day now, right? The current capacity?
Two and a half million gallons.
I'm sorry, gallons per day, yeah. That's a lot of acre feet.
But I think...
And that, so that current production of recycled water is going to the...
To Del Webb.
Del Webb, yeah.
Yes.
And just, maybe if I can just, I think that will answer your question. Like, our, during the summer months, their demand, at least for Del Webb, is 7.8 NGD. And so we can deliver as much as we can on recycled water, but they're supplementing with canal and with their own wells, because we cannot keep up with their 7.8 NGD peak demand on Del Webb. So if we do this improvement, we'll be able to make sure that they don't rely on their well, that they don't rely on canal, and we're able to deliver the recycled water program that we do have. We currently are delivering them the same amount of water in canal, or more or less about the same, as much effluent that we're actually disposing. So this is a great opportunity for us to decrease the canal delivery and increase our capacity of the tertiary, because the demand, at least the existing demand, is there.
Armando, I thought that our problem in the summertime was that we didn't have enough of the recycled water to supply everybody because of the lower population in the summertime. I thought that was an issue.
Yeah, and there is... Yes, the, you know, our customer base, you know, population, well, we have, our population really is a tourist base. In the winters, we have a lot of effluent coming in, but in the summer, our population decreases, and, but the demand goes up, so there's not enough effluent to meet that existing peak demand. So we're supplementing with canal.
So isn't the issue Warp 10 doesn't have, because of the amount of, I guess, delivery we do from Warp 10, that's different than Warp 7? You're saying with this project, we will be able to fully utilize the capacity at Warp 7, but Warp 7 and Warp 10 systems are not connected?
They're not connected. They're totally, they're separated. And I think there is enough existing demand within the existing customers for us to be able to treat and dispose of our effluent that is coming in at 3.1, 3.2 on average, so that we can be 100% recycled water and still connect the proposed customers that we have laid out. Just with one customer, with Del Webb, I mean, they use a lot of water, and they're relying on wells and also on...
So here's where I am on this. It's a lot of money. It's a big project. I think that the board packet was pretty skinny. There's not a lot of information, you know, and a lot of times we think about acre feet, and these numbers are in millions of gallons, so yeah, nice to have a conversion in there, you know, if we could. But I'd like to learn more about, what's the regional plan, you know, and how does, how do the numbers look on a piece of paper, you know, instead of just telling us a few things when we ask a question, to see, you know, what's the current water demand? What can we produce? How much of it is canal? How much of it is recycled? And what are the projections for how that's going to be used in the future? And ultimately, we need to see those numbers to try to justify the $26 million.
And John, it might be helpful within those numbers to have like a little bit of a routing thing, so it's like, on the left, you have canal, and you have non-potable, and, you know, what the demand is and how much is being met by each month, so we can get a better idea of how much canal offset we might have in savings that way. I think, you know, that kind of math and kind of detail, I think, in acre feet is very helpful to me as well.
I can give it to you in acre feet.
Right now?
Right now.
I know, but...
Yeah, I still want it back. It is a lot of information, and I get what you said, Armando, about the peak, but I want to get a sense of like, at what point do we have more capacity than demand? So hopefully, when you put down, when you break down the chart, there'll be some months, like you said, that we won't even have enough because their demand's so high, we only have 5.5. But there's, you know, is there going to be months where we have too much?
So in the year of 2023, Warp 7's effluent was 1,100, you want acre feet, 3,419 acre feet.
It's effluent was?
Influent.
Influent, that was the influent. That's what we bring into Warp 7.
So do we need to transcribe all this? Why don't we just put it into something in writing that we can, you know, study and review instead of just doing it on the fly?
And I also want to mention, in the summer, we have had to shut off Shadow Hills from Warp 7 because we don't have enough, and all of the flow goes to Del Webb. So Shadow Hills in the summer is strictly canal water. And with this conversion, it will, and we only serve the west nine holes of Shadow Hills with water from Warp 7 during the summer, during the winter months. We have to shut them off in the summer so it can all go to Del Webb, because they have the priority. So with this conversion, we'll be able to serve the entirety of Shadow Hills, the 18 holes, and the north executive course at Shadow Hills, Youngs, and the high school there is not just the high school, it's the two other schools that are connected to the high school. I can't remember what their names are, but they're the special schools that are right next to it right now.
All right, so if we could see this in, on paper, I think it would be really helpful.
I'm still not getting it. So how does this project increase our sewer? How does, how do we get more? I mean, you say we're going to use less canal, but then you guys are telling me that in the summertime, we don't have enough of recycled water.
Our tertiary capacity right now is 2.5, and we're going to bump it up to 5.
We only get 5.5, but we're only recycling half of it.
Okay.
And to be... Yeah, and the benefits really, it's two ways, right? One way is to continue as is, we percolate, we put these nutrients down on the ground, and more important than ever before, especially now, we're renegotiating Warp 10's permit with the Regional Water Aquatic Control Board, and they have a very conservative environment in regards to what those, if you will continue to discharge and do land disposal, here are the new criteria you have to meet. And one of the biggest ones is TDS nitrogen, and they have put a drive plan here of 10, total nitrogen of 10. And that is the consequences in regards to continuing with this path of not expanding tertiary, because the cost for us to treat to total nitrogen of 10, specifically for 10, is really high. It's above...
Yeah, I get it.
$150 million.
Might have been helpful to put some information on that into the packet, so that when we're reviewing this item...
And I think a lot of this information is going to be talked about later on.
I get it, but we need to know to justify the $26 million for this project.
Okay. We can definitely do that.
I know there's an item on closed session, I've seen it, but we didn't talk about this project.
Armando, I saw the letter that CBWD sent to the Water Control Board asking them about if we can even send this water that's over the 10, correct, to golf courses, right? Are we asking for that leeway? So that has a...
Well, the point I was trying to make is there is, there is, there is an avoided cost associated with us continuing to expand the tertiary water and us not face these regulatory pressures that are here on our doorstep. But thank you, Mr. Powell, I do get your point that, you know, a lot of this information needs to be on the board. We can definitely go back to the drawing table and...
Yeah, I think for me, I wouldn't want to pull the trigger too fast, and so I don't know if they give us, you know, a compliance period where if they told us today, hey, you're going to be required to do this, you're going to have so much time to implement a planner, and whether that would be enough time for us to pull the trigger at that point and not kind of go ahead in front of it at, you know, at a $26 million.
Yeah. Great, appreciate the input. We can always come back.
I have a question, John.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
So, Armando, I have a budget question. So the, are you listening? So you're proposing to use the majority of the water demand offset fee money that's in that fund for this project. So is that an appropriate use of those funds? Is that typical? You know, remind me who pays into that fund, and if we're going to, you know, use the majority of it, is that, is that typical? I'm just trying to understand more about the source of those funds and its use.
Thank you, good. So the water demand offset fee was, is a standalone fee. It was specifically kind of like replacing the previous supplemental water supply, and so the fee is living on all future development, and the sole purpose of it is so we can fund non-potable water projects or, you know, the conversions of existing countries to recycle water. So this is exactly the reason why this fee was created back in 2022. Thank you. Sorry about that.
You know, another question too, so there, there's a few hundred acres immediately adjacent to Warp 7 that eventually is going to be homes, probably, that'll, you know, produce more effluent, more effluent, I guess, to this. Have you included projections for that into this facility's planning? You know what I mean?
Yeah, we...
You could have a couple thousand homes there, right?
Yeah, we have talked to, I believe it's Pulte and their engineer, and they have given us a set GPM that they would like to see, so that they can expand to their landscape areas. So yes, we have included them as part of this.
I mean, it's not just that they'll be customers, but they'll also be providing input and product.
And they're looking forward to receiving this recycled water.
I think an important item that needs to be included in... Good morning. That needs to be included in the board packet is that the Warp 7 permit requiring treatment to 10 is already a done deal, but at the time, we were able to negotiate language that allowed us to go down to one of two paths, either 100% recycling or building treatment to 10. So that's already baked into the permit, and because of the benefit of using the recycled water from that facility, we specifically negotiated that language. Otherwise, we'd be in the process. The only other option was, okay, build treatment to 10. And this is the path that the regional board is headed towards. So in terms of pulling the trigger, that permit...
Yeah.
Has already has language, there's a work plan that we had to turn in and so forth and so on, so I can work with Armando to make sure.
But Zoe, do you think that, aren't they, that they could make us treat this before we even send it? I mean, we may have to treat it no matter what we do.
There's an agronomic rate for how much nitrogen is needed by the turf or whatever it's going on.
Yeah, there's some good studies that...
So you get the benefit of that.
I know, but we're, that's our argument, but we, that's not 100% yet.
So the recycle water policy is on our side, and we really have a dynamic group of people working together to make sure that that doesn't happen on our Warp 10 permit. So I can never answer your question definitively. Regulations can change, but I think right now, the most cost-effective and from a water management perspective, the best path forward is to try to recycle 100% of our effluent.
I mean, what you're saying, you know, these guys could do this. I mean, it's crazy, but they would make you take...
They're trying to do it right now.
Make you take all the nitrogen out and then have to put it back in.
They're trying to do it right now.
So that you can grow your grass.
Your plants, yeah.
It's absurd, yeah, but it could happen.
When you say the policy, is that, is that the state policy recycle water?
It is, it's the state recycle water policy.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I got it, thanks.
And there will be more of a conversation about this to some degree in the closed session, so I don't want to cut it off, but we can get into much more detail, Zoe, at that point about the concerns that have been raised.
I think staff understands what we're looking for, because we definitely need more information to justify the going forward with this project.
Absolutely.
Because it's not small. It's a pretty big dollar amount.
We'll be happy to revise it, staff report, and bring it back.
Thank you.
I have to look at it. It looks pretty detailed.
All right. Inputs, outputs, what does it cost?
So without objection, the board has directed staff to bring this back at the next appropriate board meeting.
Thank you, Jeff. 7B, this is a bid bidding on this well rehab project. Good morning, Sabrina, right?
This is one of our fiscal year 2324 strategic initiatives, is the rehabilitation of well The item before you is to reject the bids from South Valley Companies as non-responsive, award a construction contract to Legend Pump and Well Service in the amount of $496,903.50. And then also provide additional expenditures for a total request of $744,500. The purpose of this project, just to remind everyone, is to rehabilitate one of our high-nitrate wells in the valley pressure zone. So in lieu of drilling a new well, it provides us the opportunity to extract from the lower groundwater pressures, or groundwater levels, and install the inflatable packer that we talked about last time. So in the figure that's included in your packet on the right-hand side, it's a cut section, a little bit hard to tell, probably from this view, maybe a little bit easier in your packets themselves, is the inflatable packer in the lower portion of the well. There's also a figure, I don't know if we're able to bring that up, but it is in your packets, a photograph of the packer itself. I know there was some interest last time, and what does that look like? What is it made of? I don't know if everyone has that before you, or if we're able to bring that up. Possibly not. Okay. So effectively, it's a stainless steel section with an inflatable rubber packer. It is just rubber. It's exactly that. It's a reinforced rubber. And then right below it, so where the gentleman's hands are, that's the inflatable packer itself. Right below it would be the 10-foot stinger section, and so that's going to be at approximately 775 feet below ground surface. I don't know if you guys have any questions before I move on to the next part.
So it's kind of like a cork or a stopper that goes down?
It actually inflates.
Okay.
So that is connected to an airline. We do have a pressure sensor that we're going to install on the airline itself, so over time, as it starts to lose pressure, we'll get an alarm for that. Yeah, and, and you effectively can just connect it to a compressor, inflate it back up to the desired pressure, and it's, it's more or less temporary, but in this case, it would be kind of semi-permanent. Unless water quality changed over time, we could deflate the packer and then utilize the full production zone itself.
Fascinating.
Yeah.
So you're basically shifting where this well pulls the water to a lower...
Correct.
So the well itself, it's going to be drilled to the same depth as before, but...
So the well, we're not changing anything with respect to the well construction itself, so exactly how it's cased today with a gravel pack remains the same. Yeah. So instead of putting in a swedge, which is basically a stainless steel section that they compress against the outer limits of the casing, we can do something similar to this, or in this case, this, which we've done on another well.
How, is that the whole thing?
No.
There's lots of those, right?
Yeah, so there's only one of these in this particular well that we're going to install. This is just the section, so as they drop it down, they keep adding additional sticks of the column pipe and shaft to it as well. So this is just like the section as you would see it in real life. This is what it would actually look like. This is what it would actually look like.
Pull it out. But how tall is the inflatable thing? I mean, is it, that, that looks like about two feet right there.
Correct, correct. Yeah, it's not very long. That entire section is generally around anywhere from five to 10 feet. So, that comes from the manufacturer itself, but you're right, the inflatable section is more or less two feet. It's not significant.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. Must be cheap, then.
Pretty shallow.
Nothing is cheap anymore as we know. And so, speaking
$700,000.
Speaking of which
You could drill a little thing. The whole thing is, the whole project is.
Yes.
That little thing?
So, our budget for the strategic plan initiative was originally $350,000. As you can tell from the bids that we received, as well as our additional expenditures, we are at $744,500. So, we have $200,000 budgeted for this fiscal year, and the remainder will be budgeted for next fiscal year. So, it's, it's not inexpensive.
So, they're, so they're installing, what did you call it, a packer?
It's an inflatable packer, correct.
To, to install a two-foot-long inflatable packer, it's $700,000.
So, it's a lot more to it than just that. There's some additional work that we have to do with the well. The well was taken offline in 2017. So, on our side, we have some work from district forces, as well as installation of a new chlorine tablet feeder system. We need to replace several components on the manifold itself and some additional electrical work that has to be done. In addition to that, we also have to rehabilitate the well. So, before we even get to the packer installation portion of itself, we have to rehabilitate the well and then install the components and a new pump and motor.
So, is South, what, is the Legend going to be doing just the packer? Are they going to be doing more than that?
They do everything.
Everything, okay.
Yeah. And so, related to rejecting the bid from South Valley Pumps, the one thing I want to make a note of is the reason that we're rejecting the bid is that it didn't comply with our bidding requirements, which is to submit a hard copy bond before the bids are opened. So, they did so electronically, but not in hard copy form. And so, for that reason, because it didn't comply with our bidding requirements, in accordance with two sections in our documents, we had to reject the bid.
And that's legal?
Yeah.
All right.
What was the difference in the bid price again?
It was roughly $10,000. About $11,000.
It wasn't much.
Okay, so it wasn't much.
There were other bids that were quite a bit. Southwest was a few hundred thousand.
$900,000.
Yeah, Southwest was $892,000, about that. And then the lowest from South Valleys was $485,600.
Yeah, I mean, if you like, I can explain the background of legal reasons why we need to do this, but I
So, are, well, are we required to reject that?
Right, because there have been various cases that have said that if they don't submit the bid in the way that was required at the time to bid security, that A, they could consider to get out of having to provide that bid security, get out of the bid, or B, another contractor would say that was disadvantage to them, that we didn't follow the rules for, for this one company. So, I get it. It sounds very ticky tack, but because of the way the competitive bidding rules apply, we need, that's our recommendation is to do that.
Non-responsive.
All of the rules.
It's non-responsive.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I'd move approval.
Second.
For this side.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Pass five oh. Thanks, Sabrina.
Thank you.
Next item, C, is PSA for auditor.
Morning, Carla.
Good morning. We're here today to ask you for approval for a professional service agreement for a new auditing services firm. The district did issue an RFP on November 16th, 2023. We did have 10 responses. A review committee made up of five individuals within the district reviewed those 10 responses. We interviewed two firms, both Alice Allen Davis Farr, on January 25th, and unanimously recommend that Alice Allen be the firm selected for our audit services. The current audit firm, their contract expires this month. Clifton Larson Allen is the audit firm. We don't have any issues per se with the firm, but it's always a good practice to go out, issue an RFP, evaluate what other services are available. The one concern that we had was that the proposed partner for Alice Allen was also, has been the managing, manager on the audit engagement, and we really wanted a fresh perspective, fresh paravise. We have a potential ERP implementation, really wanted to make sure we have the appropriate resources as we go through that separation of financial systems going forward. And on top of that, the cost for these audit services were about $1,700 less than our current audit services. The audit contract does involve several items within the scope, including preparing our financial statements, doing both our interim and our final audit, which are about three weeks collectively, preparing single audit, federal funded items for review as well. There is a contingency within there as well, because if we do have two federal programs we need to audit, there would be an additional cost of $4,500 for an additional program. And that's determined at the time of audit, depending on how much federal expenditures we have. Last year, we had one single major program, but we may have more in the future, so we need some sort of contingency without having to come to you for an additional $4,500 once that's determined. And the other portion that is probably new within the consulting, within the audit services that we'd like a portion also for consulting services. Last year, we had a payroll audit that we did, just to review our processes, procedures, policies. Again, as we're going through this ERP implementation, we may need to review what we're currently doing and would like some additional capacity to do so within the contract. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, thank you.
They are.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Seven C, yeah.
I'll second.
Well, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass five oh.
Thanks, Carla.
Thanks, Carla. And then we have this non potable water agreement, calling seven D. These computers always think they're smarter than we are.
Morning, Olivia.
Hey, Olivia.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
So, Trilogy has a new owner, the Trilogy at La Quinta Maintenance Association. They bought the Trilogy Golf Club at La Quinta, and they desire to irrigate with canal water on their golf course and landscaped areas. And so, we've negotiated with them a type C non potable water agreement, the type C rate. And the rate will be $91.77, saving the customer about $16 an acre foot. But they're currently using their well to irrigate the golf course, and we'd like them to use canal water to irrigate the golf course. And it's in line with our water sustainability core objective.
Yeah. Nice to see them back on their feet.
Yeah, it is. It is.
I guess the golf course still isn't open for golf yet, but they're, they're getting there.
Yeah, they have a new
It needs water.
They have a management company.
A lot of, a little bit of rehab from the neglect that has happened.
Looks like it's back to desert in some areas.
They're excited and they're looking forward to it, and we've been out there and assessed the, the grounds and done cross connection shutdown tests. And so, as soon as you guys agree to this or approve it, they'll be ready to turn it on.
Right. Yeah, yeah, it's already there. That's the kind we like. It's not expensive.
Yeah, it's free. I didn't mention that. There's no cost.
Nothing's free, but you know
You won today.
Yeah. It's going to generate revenue. All right. Is there a motion to approve seven, this item, Trilogy item, seven D?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass five oh. Thanks, Olivia.
Thank you.
Then on to written communications. We had a couple of them that, I believe they were both resolved.
He's closed them out.
Yeah, thank you. Those are in the board packet. We have an informational item. I'm guessing Zoe's going to be doing this one. Good morning, on our Sigma filing.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. This is your, both for the board and the public, an annual presentation on our Sigma annual report, which is due every year to the Department of Water Resources by April 1st. So, I'll start off with a little Sigma compliance update. As the board is aware, we turned in our first five-year periodic update at the end of 2021 and have been waiting for a review. Recent communications in meetings that DWR attended is that they are now done with all of the basins that needed groundwater sustainability plans, and they're expecting to release reviews of alternative plan periodic updates by July. For the Indio Sub Basin, we also had a public workshop on this same topic on March 14th. This being our larger basin, there's a lot of public interest, as well as hosting the Sigma Tribal Work Group to share conditions of the basin and results of the annual report. So, I'll begin with the Indio Sub Basin. Reminder that we are lucky to have a partnership between all the groundwater sustainability agencies of the Indio Sub Basin, which also include Coachella Water Authority, Indian Water Authority, and Desert Water Agency. For Water Year 2023, and that goes from October 1 of 2022 through the end of September 2023, total water demand was just above 531,000 acre feet. That's all agencies, all sectors of the Indio Sub Basin. And that demand was met roughly half and half between Coachella Canal water, pumped groundwater, with recycled water making up just about 13,000 acre feet, a small but very important percentage to our sustainability. For the Indio Sub Basin, our five-year update did reduce growth projections relative to the 2010 plan. And even with those adjustments relative to what was projected back in 2010, we're still seeing slower growth, both in terms of development, but also, you know, we just went through two years of drought, and there was, you know, a tremendous effort from board and staff to promote conservation. So, our five-year average water use is running at about 561,000 acre feet across all sectors, which is 6.8% lower than our 2023 projections. Anything lower at the end of the day, as we discussed when presenting the five-year alternative plan update as part of our adaptive management and helps us to be in a great situation as we see increased impacts of climate change on state water project, as well as negotiations on the Colorado River.
Zoe, on your stacked sand chart there, it looks like the only group that actually reduced was agriculture?
The blue, the blue is aggregate. So, this is aggregate use, this is projected use.
Okay.
Now, in the long term, the reason that agriculture is projected to decrease is because to, to be able to have the growth that's projected for the valley, there would be some agriculture to urban conversion, particularly around the areas close to the Coachella Water Authority's service area, the Mecca area, as well as some areas in Oasis.
Thanks.
So, so that last blue bar chart is showing that we are coming in with demand that is much less than the forecasted.
Correct. So, specifically for Water Year 2023, I'm going to pivot here.
Okay.
We saw a really big decrease, but part of that is lower evapotranspiration. So, there were, you know, there was less water use across all sectors, not just urban. There was a decrease in, for example, agricultural water use of about 8,000 acre feet, which was actually higher than the 6.8 overall. So, essentially, I think we're seeing a mixture of conservation from drought impacts, as well as a year that had lower ET. So, that's why we provide the five-year average, because that five-year average captures a little bit more of the variability that we see in local irrigation demand, which is, of course, our largest driver for water use.
Zoe, in future slides, I mean, to Jim's point on those aggregated bars going up, which are very helpful, could you separate those out by color in the different sectors of water, so you could compare what the, like agricultural water use was compared to, you know, the forecasted use?
So, we, we can certainly do that. I do want to be clear with the board that because there are so many different types of water in our portfolio, we generally don't do the breakdown by sector. We do it every five years, not on an annual basis. It does take quite a bit of extra work, both on our part and the consultant part. If that's something that the board wants to see on an annual basis as opposed to every five years, we certainly can do that, but wanted to let you know it does take
Well, if you just save a quarter million dollars in consultant fees with that answer, I'm good with that.
So, moving on to the monitoring of our sustainability, sustainability via groundwater levels, we collectively monitor over 300 wells, and 57 of these wells were designated as key wells during our periodic, periodic update to be responsive to Department of Water Resources wanting us to have more metric-driven measures of sustainability. So, lots of wells, the ones shown in green, those are our 57 key wells where we established minimum thresholds of sustainability. So, happy to announce that in the Indio Sub Basin, all 57 wells are above their sustainability threshold. And we also included some selected hydrographs from those wells, just to, to illustrate how over time with water management, we've been able to recover in terms of groundwater levels or basically arrest declines in other areas like the mid-valley. So, the one-year change in groundwater levels, this is looking at last year compared to this year. Most of the valley extremely stable. I do want to point out a couple of areas where we did see some larger changes, beginning with the area around the Whitewater replenishment facility. Compared to the two previous years, we had a lot of imported water deliveries for recharge at Whitewater. So, you see that blue right below the facility, immediately ups, upgrading and downgrading. We did see some declines, and that's just part of the ebb and flow of having wet years and dry years. Near the Thomas E. Levy Facility, there were declines as the mound that is created from continued replenishment there is dissipating since we stopped replenishment at the Thomas E. Levy Facility. The good news is, and I'm going to point out to two good news, is we're seeing a very localized effect at this time with groundwater levels holding throughout the rest of the East AOB. And referencing the prior slide, all of the wells that are used as indicators of sustainability in the East Valley are all above their minimum thresholds. So, looking at the longer term, back to, we use 2009 as the baseline year, because that's when the valley generally experienced its lowest storage levels. Again, same news as we've been giving year over year. We have added storage. We have added, as a result of adding storage, groundwater levels have come up, and that is pretty much the story throughout the Indio Sub Basin. So, for Water Year 2023, we added to storage 100, just above 129,000 acre feet. This is just the inflow and outflow balance. And the one thing that I want to point out here is that in years, when we are able to add to storage compared to, say, the previous year where we had declines in storage, the big difference is the replenishment component, and that was 180,709 acre feet across all three facilities in the Indio Sub Basin. So, really good news here. The annual change in groundwater storage, we look at this every year, and, you know, a lot of noise in this graph. If you want to dig into it, you certainly can, but I'm going to keep my commentary to the yellow going to keep my commentary to the yellow and green line. The yellow line is the average change in storage over 10 years. That has been positive now for a long time. I believe it became positive in 2017. Yes. And then for the first time, our, in a very, very long time, our 20-year change in storage is, has gone positive. So that, what that means, my, the best way that I can translate that is, over a 20-year period, which is a really good window to gauge your management of a basin, and it's also the benchmark that Sigma set was you need to be sustainable and not an overdraft within 20 years, we have now reached that, which means that even through two significant droughts in which state water project deliveries were very low, the basin is being managed in such a way that sufficient water is being delivered during wet periods, that even if we have some overdraft during dry periods, we are managing the space in very, very, very sustainably. So I consider this very good news. Moving on to the Mission Creek sub-basin, again, very collaborative effort. Our partner GSA is Desert Water Agency, and a member of the management committee is Mission Springs Water District. They are a much smaller basin, 24 wells monitored for groundwater levels, of which nine were designated as key wells. All wells are above their minimum thresholds. In the Mission Creek sub-basin, we also established measurable objectives. Those were part of the original plan that we would manage to 2009 levels. The minimum thresholds were set a little bit lower, because it's a smaller basin, so we needed a little bit more flexibility in terms of management. So all wells are above their minimum thresholds, eight are above their measurable objectives, and I do want to point out that the only one that's below its measurable objective is a well that didn't have, we needed to add it to have spatial coverage, but it didn't have enough of a history, so the MO and the MT were modeled. During the next five-year periodic update, we'll be looking at the longer-term data and doing additional analysis to see if we need to adjust the minimum threshold for this one well. The one-year change in groundwater levels, we came off of two dry years, so we did see some minor declines over most of the sub-basin in the range of zero to five feet. But when we look at the long term, everything but the orange around the Mission Creek replenishment facility is quite in the positive. So a lot of storage has been added to that basin, as well as recovery of groundwater levels. In terms of the balance, inflows to the basin and outflows, we were at just a little bit below zero at a loss of estimated of negative 341 acre feet. And although for recent dry periods, the 10-year average storage for the Mission Creek sub-basin has gone slightly negative, when we look at the longer 20-year period, it has remained right at the zero line. So we are also sustainable in the Mission Creek sub-basin. So I think, you know, particularly relative to how other basins that are subject to Sigma fared through two-plus years of drought, I think all of the news here in the Coachella Valley is very positive, and as we move forward, as we adjust to changing hydrology, to growth, there are sufficient projects planned to ensure that we can maintain the sustainability. So with that, if there are any further questions, I'd be happy to answer that, otherwise I will see you all next year.
Zoe, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So is there a separate report, there probably is, and I'm just forgetting about it, that talks about the variables and the quality of the water in the wells?
So we, we do annual reporting of all of our domestic wells, and that's reported, the cumulative that is reported in the Consumer Confidence Report. We are also undergoing the effort of preparing the Coachella Valley salt nutrient management plan. Technical memorandum two, which will come out probably, I'm estimating May, will have a really robust summary of two of our most concerning potential contaminants, TDS and nitrate. And we do collect additional data, there's just not a comprehensive report that summarizes this information on sort of a valley-wide basis. It's more on a domestic well, the wells that are being pumped. I do want to point out that the Mission Creek sub-basin is slightly ahead of the Indio sub-basin, in that that alternative plan set sustainability criterias for water quality, and there is several maps within the Mission Creek sub-basin annual report showing results of water quality across all agencies. In the Indio sub-basin, Department of Water Resources asked us to just begin with providing maps of contaminants of concerns, and those are in that alternative plan, 2022 alternative plan update. There's lots of maps and cross-sections of water quality across the whole basin, and I suspect that with every periodic evaluation, Department of Water Resources will ask for more information, and I suspect what we had to do in Mission Creek, they'll ask for in the Indio sub-basin, at which time that kind of reporting will probably be incorporated into annual reports.
Excellent, thank you.
Zoe, I have two questions. How many other basins do you think, maybe you don't know, in the state of California have hit this 20-year average?
I, I don't have that answer. What I can say is, we know that, so there's about nine sub-basins that had alternative plans. That means that there's only potentially nine sub-basins that are really close to this metric.
And how many, how many would there be in California? Basins?
Basins that are subject to Sigma, over 100.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're in a very small group. And then there's a few of those nine that were adjudicated, under adjudications, they have to operate sustainably, so those have probably met that metric. So if that's two and we're two, that leaves five, so while I can't answer directly about where those fives are in terms of the 20-year average, I, we're in a very select group.
That's, that's good info to have, that out of 100 sub-basins in the state of California.
120, 126, I think.
126, okay.
I think that's.
That the, the, the most there could be is nine, that, that, meaning this average, that's, that's pretty good. And then my other question is, is that, I just had my CBCC meeting yesterday, and we got an update of how much conservation they've done so far. We're up to 104,000 acre feet, and the goal is to get a little, close to, around 200,000. And I wanted to know if, if those projections are in your growth of, because, because that's going to be conserved land, water won't be used there, homes won't be built there or anything, is that part of your, your Sigma, is that, have you taken that into consideration? Because that's going to happen.
So, um, let me answer that in steps. So in, in terms of our growth projections, we have to go by general plans, so land that is shown to be in conservation was not included as having demands. As that expands, if it expands, we'll be adjusting every five years. Now, in terms of conservation, we did include conservation in the sense of, we know that homes that are newly built are more efficient. So rather than just using the average water use currently, we adjust that for the higher efficiency of new homes. And then there's a second component where we know that, you know, the lifetime of a showerhead, the lifetime of a toilet, et cetera, is limited, so we adjusted for upgrades to older homes. At the time, the new regulations under making conservation a way of life were not fully fleshed out, and so I project that with this five-year update, we will now have the shape of those regulations, and we'll be doing more robust analysis to see how that impacts our projections. So we are, we are being conscious to all of those elements, including land use, and let's just say, the landscape and temperature of conservation.
Zoe, I, I have a couple of comments and a question. One is, is, is subsidence mapping a requirement of these annual updates, or is that just in the GSP, or how is that handled with DWR in these reporting?
So it's not a requirement of the annual report. There's a subsidence metric. In this valley, we were fortunate that we've been studying subsidence many years collaboratively with USGS. In fact, the fourth round of that is currently undergoing, and as soon as we have results, that will be incorporated into this annual report. Our metrics for subsidence are the same metrics for groundwater levels, because in this basin there's a, a very established relationship between those two. So as long as we're meeting our minimum thresholds, we are meeting what we also said as our subsidence metric of sustainability. In the Mission Creek sub-basin, more, more data is becoming available. DWR, one of their roles in implementing Sigma is to make more data available, so they now provide INSAR data, and we've been mapping that in the Mission Creek sub-basin for at least two cycles. In the Indio sub-basin, we haven't been doing that mapping with the INSAR, but more focusing on, you know, just, we've got the metrics, reporting those. But again, now that the data is available and it's understood how to work with that data, it's something that we can incorporate into the annual report. To kind of circle back and end with the beginning, we are, we do report within the annual reports that we're meeting our metrics for subsidence, since those are groundwater level based.
Okay. And it's, this is an excellent report, not only in terms of content, but the presentation's great, so thank you very much. The only comment I would have is, we haven't stopped the recharge at Levy, we've suspended.
Thank you. Decreased, we haven't even suspended it, there were about 1,400 acre feet replenished.
Yeah, there you go, decreased, yeah, there you go. That's even better, that's even better, thank you.
Thank you.
Zoe, Zoe, one thing, back to slide 11, which is one of my favorite. You know, we've been talking about that 20-year line getting to zero for a long time, and so.
No, we should have a party.
There should be a party.
It's, it's massive.
My question is, do we note anywhere how much advanced delivery water is in the basin?
Yes, that is included in the chapter on surface water, and even though we're required to, just like, think of this as an asterisk footnote, we're required to do the annual report on a water year basis, so there could still be, you know, some reconciliation, but that chapter, which I believe is, chapter five, includes accounting for, during the water year, for state water project and other deliveries to Whitewater, and at the bottom it lists the balance of the advanced delivery account.
Okay. I'll look it up.
Yeah, chapter five.
Thank you.
Have it memorized.
I think next year, given the water year, we'll be coming back with more good news.
Should be, right? Thank you. If we get delivery. Their, what, table is at 30% right now?
30%.
Board, general comments, Director Nelson?
Yeah, I think it was last meeting, I, I asked Robert to, you know, really pursue some of those regulatory issues regarding the lack of pumping, and, and I appreciated you, Robert, sticking with me on that and communicating what you, yourself, and Jennifer Pierre with the State Water Project Contractors did, a number of letters and so forth, regarding not only the importance of, of meeting DWR's mandate in delivering water, but also that recognizing the cost of water and the cost to CWD in terms of, you know, lack of deliveries, so that, appreciate that very much. And Northern California is up at 115%, so that's, that's good going into, to January. Colorado River is at 102%, so hanging in at average, and lots of good news on supply fronts there. That's, that's really all I have.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Dr. Aguilera?
No comments.
No comments.
Okay, good. Nor do I, so thank you for those. Do we have any board requests for future agenda items?
Nope.
Onto the meetings, we have a few here. March 12th, AgCon for six, conservation discussion, we came in, Director Nelson and I.
Actually, I didn't come in.
Oh, you didn't come in, that's right.
Yeah, I, I set the meeting up, and then unfortunately I had a very urgent matter come up, and.
Anyways, I thought it was, we had some good input from a couple of, of growers, growers or grow, landowners. You know, I guess we're going to, this just is such a new program.
Mm-hmm.
I think we indicated, you know, it's subject to changes as we identify reasons and needs to change, but for now it is what it is, but, but we'll see what happens in the future. It was a good meeting, I thought. March 13, environmental safety and toxic materials, wow, oversight hearing, the human right to water, Director Strata.
Yeah, that was a nice invite that we received from Assemblymember Garcia. There was a committee hearing to kind of report to the legislature on the program, how it's doing. I think there was an audit that was recently performed. It might have said something along the lines that the program is, is working, but that there seems to not be a sense of haste, the state to get the dollars out, and so I think the committee, the legislature might have had some questions about, you know, what did that mean? So the, the hearing was kind of a two-parter. First was a report out by the Chair of the State Water Board, Joaquin Esquivel, so he did a huge overview of the program and the policy and, and the funding in that program. And then there was a, a second panel, which is the panel that we participated in. There was a number of speakers, including myself, Kyle Jones from Community Water Center, Karina Cervantes with California Association of Mutual Water Companies, and Rami Cologne, he's the Director of Regulatory Affairs for California Water Service. So we all kind of shared our perspective about the program. And then Carrie and I worked on a presentation that really highlighted our collaboration with the state and, and the program and some of the funding. We highlighted completed projects, we talked about pending projects, applications that we have in the works, and really kind of just emphasized that without the program, we probably wouldn't be doing any of this, so we thought it was, it was working, we thought that we had a good relationship with the staff at the water board, that they were available, and that that was primarily one of the reasons why we were having so much success. So I, I spoke with the Chair after the meeting, and Chair of the State Water Board, and he was appreciative of the, of our comments, and I think it went well, so thank you for your help.
Good. March 15th, meeting with Matthew Frank, Director Aguilar.
Yeah, thanks, Sean. Actually, I could knock out two of these items, probably, three, three and six, but.
But so Mr. Frank is a developer who is proposing to do some large warehouse projects kind of in the Varner Palm Drive area. And that's a site that I think has probably been up for consideration before. But he seems pretty credible. So I had a preliminary discussion with him first about what they're proposing to do and the need to possibly collaborate with Mission Springs Water District on a sewer agreement. And so it seemed like it went fairly well. Then we had a follow-up conversation with Kerry and Jim about how we can do that. And this will be probably an item coming before the board in the next few months. That was it.
Okay, yeah, so that covered both dates for that. March 18th, the State of the County District.
Yeah, me.
I think it's you and Director Aguilar. I wasn't there.
Yeah, that was a cool little event, very well attended. I think they call it their, their first, the first one they have ever had, where there's a State of the District. I think usually it's State of the County, but this was a State of the District. And we were asked to participate, be one of the speakers, talk about our projects at CBWD. In particular, the projects that are expanding water and sewer infrastructure into the East Valley. And so that's what we spoke about. We kind of just went over the general history of how that came about, including the support here from the DIAS, support from the staff, our collaboration with regional stakeholders, the State of California, et cetera. We, I think, received some positive feedback. So I'm hoping that went well. So if you hear anything bad, let me know.
Yeah.
I heard some good.
No, I would just add to Vice President's comments. He did a great job speaking. It was super long. It was like almost three hours.
Oh, God.
I didn't speak for three hours.
Yeah. He did not speak for three hours. But it was informative and well-attended, and you did a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good. March 19th, memorial service for Brian Nastandy.
It was sad. The supervisor gave the eulogy along with his son and daughter. And the supervisor did a wonderful job. Wonderful job. It was very well attended. It was just a sad, sad day there. You and, you were there with me.
Yeah, I was there. Yeah, it was good to see that a lot of people from the valley showed up. I think Brian had a lot of friends. Obviously, had a long career. He met a lot of people. I think made a lot of friends along the way. And from all different types of people, right? I think that's what was obvious about it. So I think a lot of folks remembered his humor, him being kind of a funny guy. And I think we all agree on that. So it was good to be there.
Yep. March 19th, we had this Eastern Coachella Valley Celebration Discussion.
Yeah, just our routine conversations in preparation for our celebration that we're planning for on April 5th. We're getting closer and closer to that. So we're just brainstorming with staff on maps and agenda, participation, speakers, things like that. And so we, I think we're doing good. So thank you, Dan, for making that happen, the request. So we're gonna have a big section of a 30-inch mainline out there so that people can sign it with the white Sharpie. So I think that that'll be neat. But yeah, looking forward to it.
We're thinking about an arc welder, but that.
Yeah. Be there forever.
I'll be there. March 20th, Disadvantaged Communities Task Force. I was not there, even though I was listed.
Yeah, it was a quick update on all our projects. We had updates, we had folks there from the regulars, Coachella Valley Housing Coalition, the county. I'm really happy to see Jesse Mendoza participate in those meetings. He does a lot out there with our projects and his own projects at the county. But I, yeah, I'm happy to see them. I'm hoping that, and I let him know that he should continue to attend. I think he likes those meetings. So it gives him a sense too of all the things that we're working on. And it helps us coordinate. So good meeting.
Good, yeah. March 21, Salt and Sea Authority.
I was not able to attend.
Yeah, I was there. It was, it was a good meeting, very informative, lots of project updates. The board did approve a new budget for this next year with no increase in member fees. And there was quite a bit of discussion about pending legislation and the two bonds that the governor has proposed that includes Prop A, which includes $400 million set aside for the Salt and Sea, and B, which includes about $100 million, but both appear to be dead on arrival. So those, I don't believe are gonna happen in November. And there was an update from the consultant doing the community engagement work, and that was about it.
Thank you. March 25th, Coachella Valley Conservation Commission.
That was yesterday. Last night, actually. La Quinta. We were in La Quinta. We're usually in Palm Desert because we were honoring Mayor Linda Evans, being Chair for six years. And then after the meeting, we went up to the La Quinta Trailhead and they had a nice sign before her, honoring her. The big news is we got an update on our report between the Fed, the federal government, CBCC, and some of these outside groups who are buying land. Friends of the Desert is one of them. They've conserved 104,000 acre feet here in the Coachella Valley. I think it's a 75-year plan. We are 30 years into that plan of conserving 200,000 acre feet. So they're well on their way. And we did increase the multi-specie habitat fee 3.5% or 3.6% somewhere in there. So that's basically it.
Thank you. Couple of others I'll add. I'll start. Want to thank Director Bianco for being on the CEVAC. We had, you had a meeting March 14th. I attended, so I'm bringing it up. But you were on the DIAS officially, which is pretty good. I thought it was a very, very, I don't know, lots of communication at that meeting. A lot of people spoke up.
Which was my first meeting that I had seen. And you guys were commenting on how everybody was talking, so.
We're gonna add that to the meetings reported. I just noticed it wasn't on there, so.
Right.
Thanks for catching that, because I forgot about it.
Yeah, yeah, no.
We do have, we do have meetings set up in the next, I think it's next week? Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like the third and the fourth. I don't have the actual. I don't have the actual confirmation.
We're gonna go over the language for the assembly member. So we're trying to come to a consensus.
You have a deadline?
I don't know if there's a, I guess there's gotta be a deadline.
That was a very interesting meeting.
Which one?
What you're talking about, I think.
You were there too.
Oh, yeah, you were there too.
Yeah, I was there.
Yeah, I was, everyone was there. And, you know, it just seems like
Finally coming together.
Folks are speaking up. Not sure where that's gonna lead.
I think it's gonna lead somewhere in our favor. I think the favor of the valley.
Yeah. I mean, interesting comments from the tribal representative that, you know, this language should come from the CEVAC, not from IID or Coachella Valley Water District, which totally makes sense.
Totally makes sense.
Fine by us.
Kind of think that's.
I think that that's, I think that's where it was gonna land eventually. But the county and IID and CBWD, I think, are, took a first stab at it. I think it's at a place where now it's gonna have to be passed on to the rest of the folks, so.
Yeah. And as long as it's inclusive language, it should work. Okay. So March 20th, we had an Ago Caliente Principals Meeting on our tribal mediation, which we attended and were, actually put another meeting on the, on the calendar near the end of April. Other meetings?
I had one meeting to report on on Friday, March 15th. I was a speaker for the Water Education Foundation Tour. I came to the valley. We met out at the Oasis Project Reservoirs. And a nice young man that Dan set up, Mr. Anderson, met us there and he said a few words about the project. I talked, what I could, you know, I don't know too much about the project. No, I talked about the project. And then we went over to a farm and we talked about on-farm water use in the Coachella Valley. And they went and got their date shakes courtesy of Coachella Valley Water District. So thank you very much. And it was a good stop on their tour.
Good.
Great. I, so Victoria went with me to the oversight hearing. And that was early in the morning. But she scheduled a full calendar. So we, we were, I think we had like four different meetings, which I think were great. It was a super fast, exciting day. But we met with, so it was Victoria and Cyrus. Were, we were together all day. And we met with local government committee chair Juan Carrillo regarding the bill. We also met with the assembly members, Assemblymember Garcia, to also discuss the bill. And just to add to the conversation we were having about the meeting at CEVAC, I think that's the message that we received from him. And I think those were the comments that he made when he showed up to the CEVAC meeting, which was, hey, this is your bill. This is not my bill. Because I think there were some folks that were also trying to call him out and say, well, what is, you know?
What are you trying to do?
Yeah, what are you trying to do? Or how come we haven't heard from you? So he showed up and he said, hey, this is not my bill. This is your bill. I'm doing, I'm just your spokesperson.
Yeah, carrying a bill.
Yeah. And so, so I think that that's something that he not just shared with us on that day, but I think he reemphasized at the CEVAC meeting, which was, you guys need to figure it out, what it is that you want. And I think, and I think what I'm hearing, at least what we heard from that meeting, was the less restrictive, the better, right? I think that's what we heard from a lot of folks. And so then we, we, I think you might have met, I had it cut off, but you met with the Energy Utilities Committee, some of their staff.
Yes.
So you did that. I met with, I met with Chairman Esquivel also. And then we just debriefed at the end. And, but it was a good day. And so I thank you for setting that up. And that was it.
You said what calendar date, what day was it?
The 13th, the same day. Yeah, it was just, I mean, that was, that was a small meeting from the entire day of meetings.
Do we have any other meetings we need to add?
Mr. President, before, I just want to verify on the March 14th CEVAC meeting, in addition to Bianco, are there others that would like to report that per DM?
Yes.
Aguilar?
I was there.
Yeah.
That's your, okay. I'll just put that in. Thank you.
It was worthwhile, too.
It was.
I think it makes a difference just being, being there, you know? Keep Jim calmed down.
I like Jim. I like Jim's comments.
All right. So do we have a motion to approve per DM for the meetings reported on?
I'm moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Passed by though. General Manager report.
Yes, sir. Just keeping with the trend of the CEVAC meeting on the 14th, there was a request that a workshop be pulled together to allow for the commission to get its thoughts on legislative language. And while I don't have it confirmed, I have spoken with Manuel Martinez, who is coordinating on behalf of the commission. And it looks like it'll be a half a day on the 3rd, April 3rd, and half a day on April 4th. That does confuse us. It does compete with a meeting we had set up, the Joint Water Policy Advisory Committee meeting on the 3rd of April in the afternoon. So we will, we're checking with staff now to see whether there's a requirement for us to have a meeting or whether we can just distribute the engineer's report to the participants. But we'll be doing that contact because Martinez did call and ask. He described it as a two plus two with La Quinta. And I didn't see that as a conflict. But further research has indicated it is a bigger meeting. It involves both Indio, Coachella, Gulf, Ag. And we might be able to do it with alternates. But Linda Evans usually does attend that. I don't know that, you know, we've been, Indio and Coachella have been represented by other members. So just knowing there's a conflict, we're trying to resolve that. But CEVAC priority, CEVAC workshop has the priority because they wanted to get the language done before the next CEVAC meeting, which I think is April 11th, so that they could have a, I guess, a template to send off to the assembly member who has to finalize the language, as I understand it, by the end of this month. For some reason, I want to say the 26th, but I don't know if that's the right date or not.
Jim, is there an alternate for me?
No, sir. There are no alternates, according to the IID board.
There are all the.
No alternates. Specifically for us, because our member has to be approved by IID. And when we sent forward your name and myself as the alternate, we were told that the board would consider you, but there is no provision for alternates.
And nobody has an alternate?
I can't say that. Because I believe the 29 Palms representative is Darrell Mike, Chairman Mike, and Anthony Madrigal sits in that place. And I know the city of Coachella at one point had Bill Patterson, their former director of finance and city manager.
So for instance, the study session, we're gonna have two half-days. On the second day, I cannot attend.
That may be the most productive one, sir.
So I'm thinking.
I can sit in. I won't have a, I can make public comment.
We're not gonna vote on that at a study session anyways.
Probably not. It'll come before the commission on their next meeting, which is either the 11th or 12th. Sorry, I don't have my calendar. It looks like it's the 11th.
So whether it's you or somebody else sitting in on that, if there is a second study session, because we've already gone through five hours of trying to figure out the language, which seems pretty long to me.
Yeah, I can, it looks like right now I can attend in your place. I can at least sit in on the 4th, if that's what happens. And that's all I've got, sir.
Thank you. Counsel report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to mention a recent U.S. Supreme Court case, Linkey versus Freed, deals with the social media posts of elected officials. And as you know, the law has been that as a public official, if you have a private website or private Facebook page, for example, that you use for private reports about your private life, your family, and you have accept and reject friends and things of that nature, that's fine. If that page turns into something where you're talking about the official business of the elected body on which you serve, at some point, when people make comments to that page, you would not be able to block them or to take those messages off without impairing First Amendment rights. What, what we've advised clients over the years is keep two different pages, one for your public activity and one for your private activity. And after this case, that's still gonna be our recommendation. But this case was interesting because the court said you can still comment on public business on your private page as long as it's not something that you have been authorized to speak on behalf of your board, and it's not something within your authority. Well, as a member of a board director, you have a pretty broad authority in terms of setting policy. In this case itself, just real briefly, there was an individual who had his own Facebook page, talked about his family, things of that nature. And at some point, he became a city manager in Michigan. Now, he continued to use that site, not only for his family business, but also to talk about things going on at the city. And he linked to other departments about COVID response, things of that nature. And someone be. things of that nature. And someone, Mr. Linky, started to comment on those pages, and he disagreed with the COVID response. And at some point, the manager stopped the, blocked him and took off his comments. And the issue there is whether or not that was a First Amendment impairment of this individual's rights. What this court said is that, as I said before, you can use a private site to link to, talk about things that are within the general authority of your public body that you serve on. But again, if you start to speak about things that you have authority on or that are in your department, then if somebody comments, you cannot block that comment. Now, the court also said that, gee, if you're gonna have this authority and do both things on a mixed-use site, as they said, the concern would be at some point you block an individual, but then they come back and comment on something that is within your jurisdiction. If they're already blocked, then they would say you've violated my First Amendment rights. So, at the end of the day, our, our recommendation is still to have two separate sites, whether or not you're acting or talking about something within your direct authority, or just something within the authority of the agency itself. So this is a part of the law that changes that social media was certainly not part of the constitutional issues back in the day. So. And one other issue has to do with Best, Best &amp; Quaker Management sent me a notice that we have had the opportunity to serve as General Counsel since 2014, and there have not been any changes in our rate schedule except for CPI over that period of time. They had asked me to submit new rates that would take into account the CPI for this year as well as a 5% increase, knowing that A, in the future, we wouldn't be doing this on an annual basis like we do for other clients, and B, that the CPI this year is 4.7. And with a 5% increase, that would take our General Counsel rates, for what I do, to 398, and for Special Counsel rates to 417. Now, Special Counsel rates are for things that we would not normally charge a private client much more for, specialized work, but still within what we consider to be competitive for public law offerings. So we just wanted to mention that, in case there's any concerns. Thank you.
Is that subject to approval?
So, the CPI is automatic. The other is subject to approval, is within the authority of the General Manager, but that's why I'm bringing it up here in case there's any objections.
Actually, I think the General Counsel works for the Board. He doesn't work for me.
Right. But you would delegate the, the Board would delegate for you to sign the letter unless it's any concern.
We're getting stripped. The Board clerk used to work for us, too. And that got taken away. Now they want to take you away.
No, 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 no. I serve with the will and pleasure of the Board at all times. Just keep that in mind. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, I mean, if there's any concern by Board members about Jim having the authority to approve that, speak up now, I guess, right? I'm okay with it.
I have no issues.
Thank you all. Appreciate the understanding.
I did want to just mention that the District has an employee in the hospital right now for an incident that occurred last week, Friday. Not quite sure what the circumstances were, but just to let you know, he's getting medical attention, and we're tracking it. And when we have a little bit more information, I'll be happy to share it.
Thank you.
Department Reports. I don't think anybody told me they wanted to speak, but...
You know, Jeff, you left something out of your recommendation. You don't have to have any posting to social media, you know? I mean, I don't, I don't do it. And I, I think my life is pretty darn good without it.
I don't do it either.
Yeah.
I don't post to social media at all.
Well, and you know, part of the, part of this case was, he, he did link just to other departments, like, hey, if you have a concern about COVID, this other department's doing something. And that's what raised the concern of the case, which said, no, wait a minute, that's not something this Board member is doing.
Oh, it seems logical. I understand that, you know? So somebody's blocked from having, being part of a public forum. Yeah.
Yep.
Anyways.
I do some.
You can say water is good. You just can't talk about specifics.
I don't talk much about water.
Or if you do, don't block anyone. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. The, at this time, the Board will recess into closed session to consider the items listed on the agenda. Following closed session, we will reconvene to report out... Regular meetings reconvene. We do not have any reportable action from closed session, and with no further business, we are adjourned.